They said you want to take your last, well I said, I can tell I have stock to buy, but I can't.
No professional.
Any more questions?
Mayor Fleming?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have two things to add to my support. One is that we did speak with Sergeant Nava, and he actually has four gentlemen that are coming in that all have firefighting experience. And so you'll probably be hearing from them next week or a week after.
Okay.
For those four individuals. The other is that in June, about mid-June, we'll be unveiling a mural at the Fire Department that will be celebrating 100 years of the Alpine Volunteer Fire Department. That I think that is being installed Memorial Weekend, and then we'll unveil it in June.
Oh, great. I hope the whole city council will be there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. Councilwoman Stevens?
So next is the Lincoln's Run Day, and I know we have an action item here to talk about the average building. My question is, how many people have signed up thus far, and is that sign up cheap, or place?
I don't know how many people have signed up thus far. The sheet has been being available upfront. Melissa was going to contact everyone that was on an average building program before so that they could come in and fill out the new form to be ready for it. And it's also on our website for people to download or fill out on the website, and then it gets emailed to Melissa so she can get it set up. So I don't have an actual number, but I know that they were working on that last weekend, yesterday, in reaching out to all of those residents that were on it before.
Okay, well, maybe by next meeting we'll have a count. Give Melissa a little bit of time on that.
Yeah.
Do you know when that list went up?
It went up on May 1st.
Good. Because I had people come in on May 1st, and there was no list. So I'm just giving you some feedback. And they were told, "I'm sorry, we'll put a post-it note and see if we can remember." So we had given you a resolution to set it up by April 9th, so it only took three weeks. Well, thank you. I'm done with that item.
Well, Mayor, maybe you could put that on the newspaper or something.
I already did, not long. We're not, yes, we're Thursday.
So the next one is, just trying to still understand, is there a plan for approving and maintaining the roads? And what does that plan look like, and when will council get a chance to see what that looks like?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, June 4th is when both engineering firms will be here. I know that KSA has already started the preliminary work. And the contract process is kind of going back and forth. We might send them to finalize those contracts. So after June 4th, they'll have a better idea of what that time plan looks like. I have spoken with Eddie. He has reached out to two retired heavy equipment operators here in Alpine. They've tentatively agreed to assist with 20 hours of work a week. And the streets have been also sent over to the utilities so that they can review them to determine what level of infrastructure underground is needed. In a meeting with them, Eddie expressed that he'd like to use his people, as well as his contract employees, to work on the, kind of the one-block areas that didn't have any infrastructure, so that they could do that. We talked about material ordering, and he said that he didn't really feel like that was an issue, that once he got the clearance from the utilities, he could be in ordering for those street blocks that they were going to be doing.
So what does it take to get a written plan with a schedule on it?
Well, at this point, it's very difficult because we're kind of working on a council meeting to council meeting basis.
I've been asking this question since February. And yet there's this constant, "Well, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're kind of working council meeting to council meeting." We know we're not going to get any roads done this fiscal year. So why is it so hard to actually get a plan for a budget that we approved last October, and we're still waiting for a plan?
Because we're going meeting to meeting, and we're doing whatever we can do within the next two weeks, and that's it.
So there is no annual plan. So when we approach this next fiscal year, we should not expect an annual plan to talk about roads. I'm just trying to understand how this process works. We, we city council made a decision about a contract because it was all about the underground to look at the water and wastewater. We allocated $150,000. Contract not yet signed. We said, "Hey, we've got a lot of work to do to go get the streets done." We talked about that a month ago. Contract's still not signed. We just heard a report from the Finance Director that out of all the money we allocated, $1.16 million, we've only spent 27% of it. We have set aside Country Club Estates, 900 city blocks within the city that should be done every 28 years. I kind of looked at the capital expenditures and said, "You know, based upon KSA who said it's $40,000 to do a block, if it's $40,000 to do a block, we've allocated $340,000 to do a block." Because that's what he said the cost was. If you kind of do the division, that says it's going to take us 108 years to get our roads renewed. That doesn't seem like a plan. And so 108 years, I keep, I don't know what I should be doing differently. I keep asking, the last time we came to city council and you said you just got the agenda the day you showed up, I went back and looked at, you got the agenda the same day I did, you just didn't open your email. I don't know what's going on here, other than we're going to have our roads done. So that's why I ask, what does it take to get a plan that we council can look at and say, "We can judge our performance based on that plan"?
Now, KSA says we'd like to descend, that KSA is reluctant to descend.
Well, it's Heath and, well, the Fire Department and Fire Hydrate Project and Park Hill Smith Cooper that have expressed a little bit of reluctance and concern about signing the contracts at this point because they view what's going on as creating some kind of instability.
Park Hill Smith Cooper said that as well? Since last February?
Yes, sir. I'm just curious, so in the past, what plans, how were they assessed, prepared, and then undertaken? From what I understand, in previous administrations, what they did is just somebody from the Streets Department, the General Manager and maybe another advisor, they just went out to the wards and said, "Well, we should do this street, we should do that street, we should do this street." Because they're basically the worst of condition. And then come back and write some sort of a deadline order material and present to council, council would say yes, and they will go out there and do their work. But what I'm hearing now is that we have actually contracted a company who specializes in going out and doing a complete survey to give us an assessment of what roads are in the worst condition that need paving. And hopefully, it will be something that will be equal and fair for the whole community. And based on that, I think we also need to look in a little long-term planning phase, and that is the street plan. Because right now, we don't have one. The last, as far as I understand, the last one expired when? 1990?
'06, '06. Your comprehensive plan is the one that expired in '91.
In 1991. It would seem to me like we, as a council and citizens, should get involved in looking into a long-term, just like the Parks Plan, the Streets Plan as well. It will take time, and we may have to just hold back a bit. But I think for the long run and the future of our streets, it may be the wiser way to go, instead of bending here for here, for here.
So in the past, this council, which you were not part of, actually?
Well, yeah.
Actually looked and said, "Okay, what are the priorities and the accounts we're going to follow?" I just gave the metrics. It will take us 108 years to rebuild our roads at our current rate. And I don't think the city, basically what we have to do then is just start building roads up. Because they're all going to deteriorate. In 108 years, and we're over at most the last 28 years. So we either have to quadruple the budget to bring it back in line. But right now, we have no plan, and our roads are just rolling, they have been now for two years. So I agree, we need a long-term plan. I'm just worried about the roads that are falling apart right now.
I said, "Yep, I agree, focus on those, just get those..."
That's all I'm asking for, is the roads that are falling apart right now?
The idea, put those out there and assess which of the roads, I think, the Ward 5?
The Street Department can, the City Manager could, we all could. I drove all of Ward 5 and Ward 1. I came back and gave some numbers here. You all can say, "You think it stinks." But right now, no one is doing it.
To put a band-aid for this year or the next few months, I would be interested if the City Manager and whoever's in charge of the road crew wants to go out, let's look at Ward 2. I'd be happy to go along with the crew to also provide my assessment as well.
Which would be great, I think we all should.
And I think I mentioned at the last meeting that that's something that we had done, and that we identified 56 blocks. We presented it to the utilities, and so they've kind of seen it on a map also. Had to refresh my GIS skills with the Arc System, put it on a map so that they could see kind of where those were at. I'm just waiting for them to come back and tell me, "This is where we have no utilities," so that our Street Department can then start saying, "Okay, we're going to do this block because there's no utility, what needs to be done. We're going to do this block." Of course, they don't want to be the ones doing the work between Avenue E and Holland just because of traffic. They would prefer that somebody with more equipment, they could come in, tear them up, reset the base, and do that. Somebody else with more equipment and experience do those while they work on the shorter segmented streets. But until the utilities comes back and say, "Okay, these are the blocks that are clear of white work, that's where we're at."
So what's the deadline for?
So once you have a plan, you'll have a better idea of where all that other stuff is. And of course, it's always going to depend, once they get in there and they build it up, and does it need additional base, does it need compassion, does it, you know, teaching their guys all that, and understanding that, you know, most of his guys have been on the job less than a year.
So what's the deadline for paving streets?
What's the deadline?
Yeah. I'm talking about the season.
Paving season.
Paving season.
Well, the way I understand it, the paving season is through August, I believe. I've had other people tell me, depending on weather conditions and what the road needs, it could be extended all the way into October.
So if we get an assessment by these contractors, then we could do, have, at least start to have X number of streets, the ones that are more critical? Or in worse shape?
Yeah, so you can start working on them, yeah. And you have to remember too, that the proposals were brought to council, the proposal was brought to council in January. And the timeline in January was that they would have the preliminary plan and street priority listing done within a month. But it wasn't approved. And it was presented again, I think, in March, and it still wasn't approved, and it was just approved in April. So whether they can adhere to that same time schedule, Chris said yes. That's what I'm expecting, I'm expecting that. In two weeks, I'll start seeing some results from them. When we meet on June 4th, then we'll be able to coordinate or collaborate that with what did need assessment for next week. Assuming, of course, we get all our contracts signed.
You can't decide the fact that you've got to be aware of what's underneath. Just a little clue there to say, "Hey, this road's a joke." Like a 11th street, it's terrible, what are those ones underneath there? Three, four years ago, towards the end of the season, they repaved U Valley. Beginning of the next season, the very first thing they did was shoot it all up again because they had to get underneath there. I mean, that is stupid. Just poor way to spend taxpayer dollars.
It's also stupid to have their roads. And I got their roads in Ward 5.
Yeah, well...
Okay, and so we made the decision to say, "We're not going to do any work and let the roads deteriorate." I still have not gotten an answer to my question. My fundamental question is, and you just articulated a whole bunch of dates, what does it take to get a written plan from the City Manager on what our plan is?
That's going to be contingent on what the contractors?
That's not my question.
Yeah, I know you want a date.
It's, just lay out the dates. I mean, my gosh, is that so hard? You just articulated a whole bunch of dates. What does it take to get those written down on a piece of paper so we can look and say? You've already made the assessment that no one in the city of Alpine has the ability to go look at roads. You made that assessment, you said that in January. Finally, council said, "We're up in arms, go get the goddamn contractor in to go do that." And so it just delays, delays. You said, "Ah, we got to look at the underground infrastructure." It's amazing to me, it takes three months to get a contract signed with any firm to move forward. But I guess that's what it takes. Why is it so hard to write down a schedule?
I got the other. And, and I just happen to be a planning guy. I would like to see us looking forward. And I think the path that had been set with contractors is I'd like to come up and tell us this is a thing that needs to be done. And it may take, yeah, a little bit more time, but at least we'll have an expert opinion from the outside looking at what we have. And along with that, hopefully, maybe at some point, we can start looking at a a long-term management plan. And it would be nice to, we could maybe get an assessment of how much it would cost, what it includes, what are the benefits, what would be the benefits for roads and streets in the future? And start looking at that now. And I know it's frustrating, because Ward 2, I mean, I see this road right next in front of the...
The city of Alpine.
The Civic Center, that is work. And would you believe that's in Ward 2?
Yeah, I know, yeah.
So Ramon, I too, I maintain 130 million square feet of facility space. I am a planner, I understand. My frustration is accountability to a schedule. We seem to have none. We have a responsibility, we're elected by the citizens, to maintain these roughly 900 city blocks. Set aside the other 100 blocks. I'm just looking for a schedule. Because when I get asked questions, and I get that, ask them a lot, "What's going to happen to my road?", my response is, "I don't know." But don't you have a plan? The City Manager's one of the city. Certainly, she has to put a plan together, yeah. Because we've not said it, so I have no idea. It used to be, in this town, you could say, "Here's the plan, here's how many blocks are going to get done, here are the blocks." There's no question that our underground utilities are needing to get worked. We heard that when we did our budget cycle, lining up for one October. We still don't have a contract. So we have no idea what's hurting. Zero.
It seems to me like the plan is in the planning phase. We're not the contractors coming in to give us a professional assessment of what needs to be done.
We're going to plan forever.
Although I do agree with Ramon, we should maybe assess our own awards and maybe can submit those weeks.
You can prioritize them when you submit them.
I've got my list.
I mean, because I started mine.
At the same time, we did too. Once the planners come in and tell us what needs to be done, how to do it, I think I would be more happy with that because it'll last longer.
So Ramon, you're able to do eight blocks. Eight blocks, that's all you're worth. So one, two, three, four, five, six blocks, we get two, please, we need to do a block. That's the budget, that's what we got. This plan, we're going to come back with, is going to be out of paint. And we'll spend, eh, $200,000 on it, which is where this city was before. I'm done.
You're done.
Ready for the next one?
Ready for the next one.
So what's the status of the employee staffing to the HR, particularly the key positions of Public Works and Public Utilities Director positions since we canceled and activated the license of our local positions?
Well, council received an email from you last week. There are nine positions open at this point in time. The Public Works and Public Utilities Director positions have been posted for, well, since December. We've had a number of interest into those positions. One person that we thought would be able to jump in, basically hit the ground running and move with the Public Utilities Department, opted to decline the opportunity for an interview. And we did actually have someone that we interviewed last week for the Public Works position. And the other person for the Public Utilities have not heard back from them when they're available to come in for an interview.
The one that interviewed last week from the...
Public Works.
Public Works. What's his status?
What's his status?
Yeah, as far as?
He's the only applicant at this point. The other ones, so I think originally we had three. One of them refused to sign the follow-up questions. The other one came in and said, "Oh, can't afford to live here in Alpine." So we were left with just two.
So I just wanted to...
So you stated that the Public, or the Utilities Director position has been posted, or has been posted. I have not been able to find it, and I'm pretty good about going through and finding those positions.
Been posted on the Avalanche, was posted with TML. Most of the responses that we get are coming in from TML. I believe that Heather was posting on our website, and she was also posting with the Workforce Position.
She told me that the Utilities Director position was pulled and had been posted for a long time.
The Utilities Director position?
Utilities Director position, yes. Which requires some special certifications according to our position.
I think we pulled that in, in March. We pulled that, we did pull that posting at the end of March, that's right.
And why did that pull?
Because of that certification. And the thought at that point in time was that if Mike, who is getting ready to test, could test for a B, then we could come back to council and amend the job description to remove that requirement and see if we could get more interest in the position.
Of course, Mike right now is testing. No?
I think he's supposed to go this month. I think he's supposed to go this month, and then when Adelina returns, she'll be setting up her testing in June for those licenses.
We just haven't had anybody knocking the door down then to apply?
None of the applicants that we had received had the certifications for the licenses.
Even those, and we were... So you say you believe that reposition was pulled in March?
I think so, I believe so.
Would you go please confirm that, come back and report to council?
Sure.
As far as I understand, for a while, we had quite a few vacancies, but most of those vacancies have been filled, am I correct? Sorry?
We filled six the last interview cycle, and I think we filled another seven, the one before that. So we've got nine, nine positions that are still, that are still open. And I think of the nine, actually, one of them, we haven't advertised at all. You know, the Public Works, Public Utilities. And then, of course, the HR Coordinator position is open. We have not posted that yet. So we'll probably update all our postings next week for the Avalanche.
So I sent an email regarding the process for hiring, but I didn't answer, except for a mention that you would probably know since everything has changed. Can you hurry? Get me in, and I'm going to send there in a month?
Sure.
I'm done with that one.
You're done with that one, go ahead.
Next one, what's the game plan, and I'll be seeing you soon. Not heard from that in a while. So we don't get a report, I've put out the list on our lead-in.
Is the council, did the council kick back the fee schedule to review it?
Yes. I have not had a chance to get back with all the managers to review all of their fee schedules.
Good thing, give them a point. There was a agreement on some of the fees, so council was supposed to review it again?
Is there a plan, what we might see?
Of course, there's a plan. Now, I don't know if there's a date.
All dates, plans normally have dates.
Well, it'll probably be June.
Okay.
How about first council meeting in June?
That'd be great. Particularly since it's a driver, when we think about budgets, when we go on October, we're not going to get back to this one.
Okay. Anything else? You can just pull on to action items to be accomplished by a blue statement of facts, include where funds are coming from, if applicable. Action items limited up to 10 per meeting. Citizens are allowed to comment, limited to three minutes, and to be called upon by the mayor. Citizens are required to state their name and the ward at which they reside. Authority will be given to citizens of Alpine who own business or property to see, and to those who do not live in or own business or property in the city of Alpine will be allowed to speak at their time available. City Manager.
Mayor, item number one is discussed, consider take action to improve an interlocal agreement for joint use facilities with Sol Ross State University for the purpose of free practice baseball field. Which Vicky will be very happy to hear.
Thank you.
Okay. So?
Just a brief introduction. Well, last year and this year, heard a lot of complaints from the baseball people. There's not enough, there aren't enough fields, there's not enough space, not enough slots for practices and for games. Robert Yanyas actually came to me, and he says, you know, "Sol Ross has this land that they're not using that a long time ago, we used to use for softball and baseball." I reached out to Dr. Kibler, and he was very agreeable to it. And the interlocal agreement that's before you's been reviewed by Mick and by Sol Ross. I think Sol Ross actually signed this off?
Yeah, he signed off.
Yes, already signed off. And in talking with Robert, it would not really be any additional funds. They'll probably go out, clear the land, do some minor work, and then get some of the teams to help donate some material and labor to do some improvement so they could use them this year, and then work on them in the offseason to make them better facilities for the teams to use next year.
And what's the proposed effective date?
Would be today, if it is signed.
Yes, sir.
So I know that we approved the interlocal agreement for joint use facilities with Sol Ross University for the purpose of free practice baseball fields with an effective date of May 7, 2019.
Yes, sir. Okay, motion is made in a second. Any discussion? Keep anything safe. Nothing, councilman? I think it's a great idea for that, because, yeah, I've been hunted by baseball enthusiasts. And did the National Guard contact you? Because they were willing to do so.
They're helping, they're helping out.
They're helping out, great, great, great. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, pose, white sign. Motion carries, thank you.
Mayor, item number two is discussed, consider take action to approve the 2019 budget calendar. The calendar's already been reviewed by Mick. He responded that there were no, he had no comments regarding the dates and the deadlines. He responded that there were no, he had no comments regarding the dates and the deadlines. An email went out to the department heads regarding all their RFPs. They're currently working on them to get them out, mainly, I guess, the three main ones is Skinner for the well service, Trinity for the treatment plant, and then Eddie's material. And I believe the funds are already up on the website?
Yes.
And has gone out, press release has gone out, and we're planning for that public hearing. And so we'll start working. There were no amendments that were submitted to finance for their budgets, and next week we'll start working with the department meetings to set their objectives and goals and continue with their RFP process for vendors for the upcoming school year.
Yes, sir.
I move we approve the 2019 budget calendar.
Is there a second? Second? Okay, motion made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oppose, right side. Motion carries. Okay, item three.
Mayor and council, this is discussed, consider take action on resolution 2019-5-1, -5-1 regarding the budget billing for gas and water utility customers for the city. This is the resolution that Mick drafted. Actually, this is not the right one. Actually, under item four, it should have after that as exhibit A with the guidelines attached being that exhibit A.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the resolution 2019-05-01 as written.
Okay, there's a second? Any discussion? What about you?
I think it was a week. Did you second?
Yes.
So, the guidelines say that annual budget billing enrollment takes place April 1st through May 15th of each year. Today being May 7th, we have a month and a half set aside. What is the plan for implementation this year, given there's only one week left out of those six weeks?
That was the reason that I had asked Melissa to reach out to all of the residents, because we were actually already behind on this timeline. At this point, if council chooses, we can extend that to May 30th, or the last Friday of May at this point, on an annual basis. Do you want to extend it?
So, in my view, since we haven't set for six months, and I tell you, Jessica, I've had a number of people come in, they can't seem to get through that list, they get it on a sticky note, they keep asking, they said, "We don't have a pool of knowledge yet, we'll just keep the sticky notes." So, the facts are, people have come in and asked, "We have a lot of work to do," in my opinion. I think we need to extend the timeline out to middle of June at the earliest, and not go to the end of June, to give people an opportunity to get signed up.
So, if you extend it to the end of June, then their bills won't be, their bills won't come out on average until August?
I think so. If this is put back in place, uh...
That's not the process.
Not fair to them. We canceled it ago, I canceled it, I canceled it, so now we're in a rush like that. I think we have a lot of work to do to get that put in place. And if I do go to the end of May, it's just not possible. So, uh...
I see.
So I think from our standpoint, June, and right now, they can't do it anyway. So, they got no plan.
Have they already signed it up?
They're already signed it up.
How many have signed up? I said earlier.
I don't know. I did not ask Melissa.
Okay. Right to here at next council meeting, how many people have actually signed up? What are the average?
Have you noticed, give us an update on that?
I'm sure she can.
I can.
I can either.
And what is on the anniversary date mean in the average bill, bill and pay options? It says on the anniversary date, the amount will be adjusted. So what is the anniversary date? How's that function?
The anniversary date would be the date of annulment.
So, you may want to just change that now. On the annual date of enrollment, we'll find what anniversary date is. This document talks kind of gas and water together. Gas is one thing, and as we're already talking about, is used in the wintertime. Water, wastewater, which, you know, water is tied to sanitation service systems tends to be the summertime. I think this document needs some clarification, no different than our average billing schedule, our fee schedules, which we sort out in our due schedules. So that would be something I think that needs some work, something to do if we came back and talked us about that. What does BTU mean? If a bank draft is returned unpaid from the bank to ETU, what does that mean?
I don't know what the technical word is. Kind of like ACH, it's the Automatic Transfer and Deposit. ETU is us.
Where's Mike? Okay, so, how about next city council meeting, come back and help us understand how to clean this thing up. I think from an implementation standpoint, we go forward to say, "I do, 30 June." We'll have to go up to the sign.
Do you want that just for this initial year?
Just for this year to get a start.
Okay, so just this year through June 30th, and then the May 15th deadline is okay for next year to re-enroll?
Yeah, because then, then I'll notify you. That make sense to us, county? And I do have one question for Mick. So, the question, Mick, is this is by resolution, this does not require ordinance, even though we're setting a fee or setting a process? I don't, I don't know.
Well, the way I view it was we were reinstating one that didn't fit in the past. We made a lot of material changes.
Okay. So, it's not true that we had to stop it because we did not have a resolution? It sounds like we had one.
There was one from the early 2000s that was in effect, and that was what the basis of the average billing was.
So, why did we stop it? That's another question. Sorry, I'll go off.
So, Mayor, were you, I mean, Mayor, I'm sorry, Mick, were you all ever able to locate that resolution?
No, Cynthia and I couldn't find it. We did find the number. I don't believe we ever, I don't believe she ever found it either, Cynthia.
No, sir, I didn't.
But we did have the number of it.
When you drafted this resolution, Mick, did you look at the ordinance that is in place for the gas?
I'm sorry?
When you drafted this resolution?
Yeah, we looked at the ordinances that were in place, yes.
For the gas?
Yes.
And so, did you take the language from the gas department to put this together?
Well, I wouldn't say I took it necessarily, took it directly from it, but it's similar. Yes, ma'am.
So, and then, so again, to Mr. Stevens' question, was there an ordinance for the average billing for water?
Well, all we have is that, I think it was a resolution adopted in the early 2000s that we were able to find, but we don't have a copy of the resolution.
So we don't know if that resolution ever said any guidelines or policies or anything? It's just mentioned in minutes?
No, apparently it was a similar matter where it was left up to the administrative staff to set it up, in accordance with the policy that was adopted. In other words, how you calculate the annual rate and how you calculate the average was generally stated but not detailed.
But we had an ordinance for gas, is what I'm hearing.
Yes, I believe so. Gas, but we didn't find anything for water, except that 2000, early 2000s resolution.
So, we went through a huge perturbation on stopping gas and water for what sounds like an administrative issue, and we put all our citizens who are lined up without the process. So, the good news is we're restarting.
Mayor, I call for the question. Call for the question.
So, before you call for the question, the motion was to approve it. Is the motion to approve it with those three changes to it? Or are we not approving it till I bring this back next month with the changes to it?
Move forward. Came with the dates mentioned, correct? Okay. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oppose, right side. Motion carries. Okay, item four, city manager.
Next, item is discussed, consider take action on resolution 2019-5-2 authorizing intervention in the AEP Texas Inc.'s requested rate change proceeding before the commission approving cooperation with the city served by AEP Texas, hiring Lloyd Gossling, attorneys and consulting services to negotiate with the company and direct any necessary litigation appeals, requiring reimbursement of the city's rate case expense filings at that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, require notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel.
Yes, sir.
So, Mayor, I propose we approve resolution 2019-05-32 authorizing intervention in AEP Texas Inc.'s requested rate change proceeding before the commission approving cooperation with the city served by AEP Texas, hiring Lloyd Gossling, attorneys and consulting services to negotiate and direct all the certification appeals, requiring reimbursement of the city's rate case expense finding and meeting, and this resolution is passed open to the public as required by law, requiring every agency to review this resolution.
Okay, motion spiced in the second. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
A question, I noticed that the expenditure required is zero on this, since it's what we're given yet. We're supposed to be reimbursed. How does that process work?
Is anybody ready to hear?
No, but Mick can answer that question.
Okay.
My microphone's on. The process on the rate, on the rate study, the rate increase?
Yep.
Is that the question?
Yeah, so how do we get reimbursed? Do we have to put any capital or cash on the table that we get reimbursed for? Or that's all handled by the attorney, Lloyd Gossling, the attorneys?
It will all be handled in the course of the rate case. But what you're doing, United Suspending, you're requesting increase. And as a group represented, group of cities represented by the same law firm and consulting services, there'll be examination of the proposed increase and hopefully a reduction in those rates over the course of the study. If whatever increase is ultimately granted, and the commission will be backdated to a date described by the statute, your suspension today just gives you the opportunity to participate in that rate process. And we typically, and Lloyd Gossling, attorneys, will include costs associated with our work on this, to recover that as part of the rate case. So typically, we will get some reimbursement of that.
Okay. Next question I have is I see that AEP is trying to increase the average rate for customers in the central division by $4.75 per month and decrease the average rate for customers in the north division by $5.01. Do we have any idea which of those two divisions we're in?
I believe we're in the central group, based on what I've looked at in the past, although I didn't look at that, those numbers for this particular case.
Okay, so...
But we can confirm that for you.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is, what's going to happen is the north, so this is AEP combining two divisions, the central division and the north division, they want to manage it as one cost entity. I get that from a business standpoint. But the folks in the north will end up spending or getting, I think when it's all said and done, are going to end up a decrease, and those of us are going to get an increase. So what that means is, we're going to end up seeing an increase within Alpine.
Most likely, that would be the ultimate result. And the idea of the rate case is suspending the rate and allowing the rate study and rate case to continue is making a smaller increase for the people in Alpine.
So, just to help correct the record, the city secretary just handed me the list in appendix A to the petition, and says Alpine is in the north division. So the group says we expect to see a reduction.
Sorry, I had that wrong.
Okay, no worries. No, just thought I'd ask.
All those numbers could, of course, change as the basis of, as the consultants look at all these rates. So that's what, the suspending the rate case is designed to allow that to occur.
So we obviously increase, yes. That's good for us. The folks in the other group, central, will have a problem, so it's amazing to me, we're considered in the north, but I'm not going to argue.
Don't argue that point. Okay? Any more? Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Oppose, right side. Get a decrease. Thank you very much, motion carries. Okay. Item number five, Councilman Stevens.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, the purpose behind this particular action is we have individuals or individuals who want, and a request made by Bicorne, as you see in your agenda, to install concrete curbing along the properties to deter, and that's at 606 East Brown and 809 East Phelps, in order to deter water from the rain from the flooding properties that currently runs down that area and all the other ground that goes with that. You see in your package a patent building permit that is dated March 3rd, and then you see the layout including where those curves would go on North Phelps. And you see the layout of what the curve looks like. And so, with that as background, I propose we approve the request by Bicorne at 606 East Brown and 809 East Phelps to install concrete curb along the properties to deter water from the rain from flooding those properties.
Second. And motion spiced in second. My favorite is. Is there any discussion?
It just happens to be a work line.
Okay. Already seen no discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, right side. Motion carries. Are they getting curbed? Number six, Councilman Stevens.
So, the particular action here, you see an ordinance 2019-05-02, which is really aimed at codifying an increase in fuel services at the airport. One of the things that we've seen from the council standpoint is we can be responsible anywhere between 10% to 50% of what goes on at the airport. Council, I think, has made wise decisions about making investments, and an important part of our infrastructure, but will also observe that there are times the airport doesn't always bring in enough money to be able to do things. The Airport Advisory Board has been very active in taking a look at the amount of fees that are being charged, which, by the way, are no listed anywhere in an ordinance or resolution by this city. It has been charging a fee for pumping fuel, and the Airport Advisory Board suggests that we increase that amount to what you see there listed, particularly for jet A fuel, from up to $1.76 per gallon, and full service is $2.01, a 25 cent difference. As a consumer of jet A fuel, I'm not exactly excited about this ordinance, but I think it's exactly the right thing to go do. I will tell you that I am on the agenda for a future Airport Advisory Board meeting to talk about, in my view, a much better strategy, and that is, when you're running a business, you want to increase margin between what you sell things for and what you buy them for. This city has never adopted that approach. I've written some strategy papers for the Airport Advisory Board that offer a couple or three suggestions. One is that we do... One is that we do, in fact, establish a fuel strategy that in our budget going forward for 2020, that we buy fuel on a wholesale basis, not on the spot market. And that allows us to buy fuel a whole lot cheaper than we do right now, because right now, we buy it a truckload at a truckload. And we get whatever that spot price is, and unfortunately, we're paying a premium. The second thing that I believe that needs to go into the overall strategy is to provide that we don't set a specific fuel fee, but instead, based upon what goes on from a market standpoint, in my view, we ought to be at an average market for this particular area. When you include Pecos or Stockton, Alpine, Presidio, those are probably the big places that people go to and buy fuel that are going to come to Alpine. And then based upon that, you settle on a market, you buy as cheap you can, you actually will increase the amount of money that would bring in for revenue for the city. The third thing is that I see a big difference between those who are self-serve and those who are full service. When you bring in a jet aircraft, I think I had responsibility for many of those in my prior career, you're going to fill one of those things up, you're going to put a couple thousand gallons in, you're going to want to get it out of the truck, because every time you turn on the starter, because you turn on a starter that's going to, that is probably $25,000 to $30,000 just for the starter to get that thing going, you want to cycle it as low as possible. Those guys are going to use full service. The guys who are coming in for a, as you would say, the, you know, for whatever, they're coming in for hunting or whatever, and they want to buy cheaper fuel, I think you want to increase the fuel service, full service price and a great margin than self-service. But I think the Airport Advisory Board's got to go work that. So this is, in my view, a temporary ordinance to get put in place. You'll notice that it amends section 14, or at chapter 14, it adds a new section that does not exist, 14-8, on fuel fees, which doesn't exist. So this will put it in, and it gives us an opportunity in future to put that longer-term strategy in place, and you'll see that, I believe, sometime during the summer. We certainly need to get it done before we have a strategy implementation for our budget that we'll approve on October. That's probably more than you wanted to know, is trying to sell high, buy low, increase the margin. So we get more money through the airport. The next thing they want to be able to go do is do lights, which they need to update the runway lights, they got to do basses. That's just a fancy term for when you're coming in at night, you can actually see what your right altitude is and elevation is coming to the land. And at some point, we're going to have to replace the automated weather observation system, also called AWAS, because it's going to have to move if we ever want to expand hangars. So in my view, this is the right thing to go do. So with that, I propose that we approve ordinance 2019-05-02 that increases the, or changes the fee for jet A fuel purchased by the city to import aircraft at the airport. The markup shall be self-service, $1.76, full service, $2.01.
One quick, one quick question, Greg. I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
Says full service, $1.76.
Want to make a second one?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, consecutive.
Okay.
Does full service, $1.76, full service, 201? What do you get extra, 25 cents?
You get a truck pulling up to your airplane.
Or you consider-
Yeah. So self-service, you go out there, so you like, you want to go fill up the car at the gas station. Okay? There aren't too many full service islands around anymore, although I saw, I pulled into one in Texas in Dallas here, because that business over there. Full service, I don't think I will actually come out and pump. In this case, I'll bring the truck to your airplane. And so the reason to do that in a turbine airplane, turbine airplane engines have a temperature, they kind of run about 750 degrees C, pretty hot. If you hot start them, you can smoke them, burn them up. So you really don't want to start them at every hour at the most. So you can't literally start your airplane, pull over the fuel pump, fill it up, and then pull away. You're going to have to sit there for an hour or so. Most guys use the fuel truck.
Just out of curiosity, the airplane that you have, how many gallons does it hold?
My airplane holds 281 gallons.
Oh.
Oh, and I'm a small user. The big boys, so the predominant user of fuel at the airport is the border patrol for the head companies. In my view, at some point, we're going to have to watch how we manage what their fuel prices are. The current member of the Airport Advisory Board, Kim Angel, is well in support of this. The government will pay for it, I think. If someone are coming in and looking, says there are cheaper ways for them to buy fuel, they outrank their own fuel truck, and so we're going to have to manage that. They're the big issues. When you bring in a G1, a G4, or you bring in a Stabilizer or whatever, we're going to suck up 2,000 gallons. So 2,000 gallons is real money.
And we have the capacity to hold that much?
Yeah, we have a tank, we have a couple tanks out there. They hold 6,000 gallons, jet A, and our low lead, we don't use very much of that. A typical piston airplane, low lead, might use 50 gallons. It's not going to be using a lot. The real money is paid off jet A. So that's why you want to get the mortgage up.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all of them favor? Raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Okay. City council, separate comments. So would you, your role?
Start with me. I'm on a roll. Nice to see everyone here tonight. And thanks for, thanks for the vision, all the time, and respect, we go along with lots more, you know? So we want to continue to attend soon.
It's good, Mayor.
Councilman Escobedo?
Thank you for coming, and I hope to see you all again soon.
Councilman Fritz?
I want to say this, well, this is my last meeting. I turn it over to you next Tuesday. It's been a pleasure and honor and privilege to serve for, all total, a little over eight years at this table. And I am returning this over to very highly competent hands, my lovely wife, as of next Tuesday. I really enjoy doing this, and I still want to participate in activities of the city, but I won't be at this table. It's been real, and thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Again, thanks for coming, and thanks for all the participation. And I guess to Councilman Fritz, for your years of service, thank you, sir. And Betty, we shall see you next time. And congratulations to Maria for another term.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations, and I guess we'll see you around.
And I would like to thank you for your service. Thank you. You've been here quite a while, you've done conferences a lot, and I'd like to see you with a lot of expertise going out the door.
I'll be in that chair.
You'll be in that chair.
The woods go through seats.
Thank you for being here, serving your city. And I also want to congratulate you, Mrs. Gerald, on your election, also, Mr. Carter, on women and herds, and we'll have a special meeting to go ahead and swear them in and make them official.
Swear in 1, 3, and 5.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
So- Pursuant to Texas Government Code 551-071, consultation with Attorney at Mass, which is due to the city attorney in Texas, Miss Carter, who is to be in conduct. The fact that this chapter requires discussion, we add it in closed session, and give the law and act zero subrare consultation with Attorney at Law and Constitution. Complicated claims to the city, pursuant to Texas Government Code 551-074, employer employment, employment evaluation based on the duty's dismember or dismissal of public officer employee. I believe that we move into executive session, discuss by rights. The duties of the city manager, deliberation regarding performance review, discussing and performance assessment, evaluation of the city manager, agree deliberate regarding actions, city council, still vote to do employee personal matters.
Right, Chad.
For consultation with the city attorney concerning the county's city under the benefits agreement, imply deliberate directed and authorizing the city attorney's service liaison, TML, health benefits, and other providers to conduct such review studies and inquiries necessary to assist in the day. Close coverage options for the city's employee self-help program for the upcoming year. Okay.
Is there a second? Okay. Motion's made, second. Any discussion? We're going to execute a session. I'm sorry, you got a vote on it. All those in favor are going to execute a session. All those with all those white sign. Okay? What time?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
I'm going to lower it.
Sir, Mr. Mayor. I propose we move back into public session.
Okay. Second. From all of you, second. Any discussion? None. Those who favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. We're back in regular session.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Relative to action item number one, I propose we take no action.
Okay. Second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. No action on that. Motion carries, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, relative to action item number two, I propose that, given our action to edit the performance improvement plan, we finalize that document for presentation at the May 21st meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? None. Raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I propose that the city council direct the city attorney to take action to prepare a document for council approval, so that council is able to appropriately review employee personal matters that may involve the city manager.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Raise your right hand. Oh, okay. Okay. Oppose, like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I propose, relative to action item number four, contemplating the climate against the city under employee benefits agreement, the city council take no action.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? None. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Motion carries.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I propose, relative to action item number five, that relative to appropriate action directing and authorizing city attorney's service liaison of TML health benefits and other providers to conduct such review studies and inquiries necessary to assist in the day. Close coverage options for the city's employee self-help program for the upcoming year. The city council take no action at this time.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, opposed or rejected?
Before we adjourn, guys, 12 o'clock tomorrow at the American Legion, there are going to be barbecue plates to honor our employees. I would like to see each and every one of you there.
Unfortunately, I cannot be there. I try to be. So I, I'll be in the air tomorrow morning for this travel, media news, and other-
I didn't post the agenda.
Hey, well, I just make it up a little bit now.
But she has to talk like a gentleman.
Okay. Also, if they make adjournments, not debatable.
Thank you, Mayor.